Good evening and welcome to the North Las Vegas City Council meeting this evening. There are two public forums set aside for public comment, one at the beginning of the meeting and one at the end. If you wish to speak, please complete one of the blue cards that are on the podium rail to my left or your right, or out the main doors where you came in. Please give the card to the city clerk who sits to my left over here. When I call upon you, we request that you limit your comments to a word in three minutes and that you avoid repetition. Madam City Clerk, we in compliance with and about open meeting law.
Mayor Lee, yes, we are in compliance with the open meeting law.
Great, thank you. Tonight, we're gonna spend quite a while since we've been able to bring the public in, but we had the opportunity to have an invocation given to us by Pastor Aaron Hansel from the Discovery Church. Following that, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance led by our own Councilman Churchill. Please rise.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for your presence. We thank you for government and the leaders that you have established to perform the duties you have called them to and to carry them out with your wisdom and your integrity. Father, we pray for your hand to be upon the proceedings today and that you will guide these leaders with your wisdom and your insight. Father, I pray that your strength would be theirs, Lord, as they continue to lead us through and lead this city through this pandemic. Lord, I pray that you would strengthen them, God, and I also pray that your hand would rest upon them. And Father, that in all things that you would receive the glory and the honor that is due your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much for coming down here today and opening our meeting, Aaron, with this prayer today. And once again, to Councilman Churchill, thank you. Tonight, we're going to start off with a presentation on the State of the City led by Assistant City Manager Dellen Goldberg. Dellen?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. So, welcome to the 2021 North Las Vegas State of the City recap. Catherine, if you don't mind advancing the slide. So, like many things in the past year, we took a new approach to State of the City because of the COVID-19 pandemic. For the first time, it was an all-virtual presentation. Typically, we do a banquet at one of our North Las Vegas resorts, but this time it was all digital. Originally, that came about clearly safety is paramount for our residents and our staff, and so that was the impetus. But much like throughout the COVID pandemic, we've innovated out of necessity, but also out of looking at how to do things better and talking to our customers. And like a lot of the innovations we've made over the past year, State of the City turned out even better than we had anticipated in this new all-virtual format. And so, we were able to reach even more people than we had in the past and than we anticipated. Next slide, please, Catherine. Thank you. So, lot of different formats. We typically publish on social media to some extent when we have the live meetings, but we really want to reach as many people as possible this year because we know our constituents have a lot of questions about what's going on and what we've been doing in response to the pandemic. And so, we had multiple, multiple channels that this video and presentation went out on. We had our social media, you know, Facebook, YouTube. We also had the City of North Las Vegas website, citiofnorthlasvegas.com, as well as many of you shared the presentation on your networks and to your contacts as well, as did our directors. And so, with media, we reached well over 210,000 people. About 205,000-plus were through media, our media partners that are essential in always getting the word out to the community about what we're doing here in North Las Vegas. We were featured on several national and local sites. And the advertising value, if we were to go out and buy views and touches for those 200,000-plus people, that's a value of $15 million, which is pretty good. So, just to put that a little bit into context, in just three or so weeks since State of the City, we've reached three times as many viewers as we did for last year's video that has been posted for approximately 13 months. And so, the outreach really had the intended impact that we had hoped for. I will say, I want to be judicious, a certain sister city to ourself had 375 views on their YouTube page for their State of the City. So, just by comparison, ours had well over 1,000 on YouTube and close to 3,000 on Facebook. And they probably have multiple platforms as well, so I don't want to judge them on that, but just to put it into context. So, for our thank yous, next slide, please, Catherine. I would be remiss, Montgomery Media, Clint Montgomery and John Long are partners this year and last year, in fact, in putting together the video presentation. They are passionate, they're hardworking, and they want to deliver the best product possible. And I think the product that we delivered to our residents speaks to that. Very proud of their work, and we appreciate all that they did for us. Internal team, this wouldn't have been possible without our communications division, particularly Patrick Walker and Sandy Lopez did a phenomenal job. Patrick and Sandy ushered this project from beginning to end and really made it the success that it was. Also, really wanted to thank Lori Glassford, Rizelle Pebonito, and Nancy Chavez. They are the backbone of our ninth floor, as you all know, and make appointments happen and last-minute changes. And so, I really wanted to thank them for facilitating this presentation. And then, really, everybody in the city. We wouldn't have the wonderful things to share and report back to our constituents and our citizens and businesses if not for the hard work of this council, our city manager, our city attorney, and really everybody, directors down to, you know, rank-and-file staff in the city. If they weren't making the vision that you guys set out a reality, we wouldn't have much to say at our State of the City. But instead, we're nearing 100 million square feet of development. We've been a leader in responding to the pandemic, and we're really proud of that. So, we want to thank all the staff as well. And so, with that, unless you have any questions, I would love to show part of our presentation. That was the video for the entire council.
While she's sitting there, I'm gonna ask all of you to say something, whether good, do you change, what you'd add, what you liked, you know what I mean? Because this is where we can figure out for next year if we're still in the same situation. After the video.
Oh, perfect.
2020 has been a year like no other. It has been a challenge, and my heart goes out to all of you who have struggled or lost someone you love. What I can tell you for certain is that North Las Vegas is resilient. Our community is filled with hard-working men and women who know how to rise to a challenge. As a city, we've been through troubling times before, and we've come back the better for it. This will be no different, and we have great expectations for the year ahead. Throughout the pandemic, our fantastic City Council has gone the extra mile to support our residents and businesses here in North Las Vegas, not only to help them weather the immediate health crisis, but also to provide them the tools and pathways needed for the long-term economic success. We have focused nearly every penny we have received in aid directly towards helping our constituents, and we are committed to continuing to do so until this terrible pandemic is behind us.
North Las Vegas was one of the hardest-hit cities in the nation in terms of COVID. That's particularly true for our most vulnerable populations and communities of color.
We've been extremely proactive throughout this pandemic to identify the community's most pressing needs and address them. We immediately sprang into action last spring to provide PPE to frontline healthcare workers and meals to residents impacted by the virus. We sent almost daily messaging to businesses to inform them of relief programs available and created maps and online tools to funnel business to North Las Vegas companies to try to keep them afloat.
Since COVID-19 hit our region, our city has fought relentlessly to obtain a fair share of federal dollars to help you, our residents and businesses cope with the health and safety measures as well as the economic fallout caused by the pandemic. We succeeded in securing nearly $24 million from Clark County, which we have delivered straight back into the community in record time. We have provided rental assistance and mortgage assistance for residents and businesses, paid overdue utility bills, secured high-speed internet for students and job seekers, and provided grants to almost 1,000 small businesses to keep their doors open and their workers employed.
We didn't forget about our veterans or our seniors either. We partnered with Helping Hands of Vegas Valley and Diamond Events to deliver meals to our seniors and in cases where they could not leave their homes, even their pets.
Ward 1 is the city's largest word geography and most diverse. In fact, this bronze bust of General Zapata was a gift to us from the city of Morelos, Mexico, in recognition of the fact that North Las Vegas has the highest percentage of Latino residents of any municipality in the valley, a fact that we're really proud of. And when I say diverse, I'm not just talking about culture. We're also diversifying the economy of all Southern Nevada by bringing in new industries and sectors to North Las Vegas. This year, despite the pandemic, we have seen major growth in our industrial parks with distribution and light manufacturing facilities sprouting from previously undeveloped land, like Amazon and Colay Flooring. Ward 1 has also seen significant investment in infrastructure to support the growth that is coming. Interstate 215 is now a full freeway thanks to the completion of the Northern Beltway, and the I-15/215 interchange is under construction, which will make commuting around the city, both for residents and for delivery trucks, safer, quicker, and easier. Our vision for Apex Industrial Park is coming full circle with one water line nearly completed and another water line in development. Already, we've seen these investments drive development to Apex, including Air Liquids West Coast Liquid Hydrogen Production Facility. With so much happening now and on the horizon, this is an exciting time to be in North Las Vegas.
Long before I became a member of council, I was an elementary school teacher and administrator, and I still have an affinity for youth and education. So, the wonderful thing our city does for youth really excite me, not just because we're doing them, but because they are working. Last August, we established the Southern Nevada Urban Micro Academy to help children and families struggling with distance learning. SNUMA allows for in-person classes following all health and safety guidelines and a curriculum that meets and exceeds state and CCSD standards. Our micro school kids are making academic gains that are truly unparalleled and will ensure their long-term academic and career success. We are expanding the program now and are still enrolling children so that no one is left behind during the pandemic. Education is the great equalizer, and we are working to ensure that every child in North Las Vegas receives a quality education. We are also supporting families who may be struggling and need some help. The city renovated this former fire station for Clark County to operate the harbor on Martin Luther King Boulevard, which provides intervention and wraparound services to young people accused of minor crimes to get them the services they need rather than put them in the justice system. This gives them a chance to succeed without a criminal record following them for life. Our parks are being rejuvenated with lots of new amenities for everyone to enjoy, and we have so many new infield projects that are happening throughout Ward 2 that are revitalizing our older areas. We are bringing in affordable new multifamily apartments near Texas Station, a new dependent care facility on the former Buena Vista Springs site, and great new restaurants like Freddy's Frozen Custard and Steak Burgers and another Dutch Bros Coffee. This is bringing hundreds of new jobs just to my ward alone. For example, right here on West Cheyenne is the massive recently completed matter warehouse office complex and logistics center. This facility will soon be a beehive of business that will continue to add to our city's economic growth and diversity, enabling our residents to find good, high-paying, quality jobs outside of gaming, tourism, and hospitality.
I live in Ward 3, and I really enjoy it because it is a living metaphor for the growth, prosperity, and evolution of our entire city. It's a perfect blend of established neighborhoods, vibrant new developments, and natural wonders. Already, the city has more than three dozen parks and 70 miles of trails, and we're adding to it. The new Linear Park, for example, is a half-mile long and will connect the Valley Vista community to our regional trail system and the Aliante Master Plan community. One of the most unique features in our ward is the Master Gardener's Orchard. University of Nevada Cooperative Extension conducts fruit and plant research here and offers lessons, demonstrations, even tastings that are great fun for families. The produce varieties and growing methods tested here frequently end up at local farms and farmers' markets, so you can give them a try. Another amazing feature of Ward 3 are the Tulley Springs fossil beds just north of the orchard. This ongoing paleontology excavation, including the nearly completed visitor center, is an educational bonanza that is quite literally in our backyard. Nearby, Valley Vista is a new community that is really starting to come together. It is a 600-acre parcel that just two years ago was nothing but barren desert land, but now reputable builders and developers are working with us at the city to create a range of wonderful communities, from smaller homes to multifamily dwellings to large stately properties. If you are looking for a sense of community, you will certainly find it right here in North Las Vegas.
Here in Ward 4, it's hard not to notice all the work that's going on to keep our city growing and to keep our community prospering. This is Watercolor, a diversified community development next to the exciting Job Creation Zone and our beautiful VA Hospital. This whole 150-acre area is going to be a tremendous live-work-play hub for our entire city. The residential and mixed-use plans include a variety of homes, retail, and dining, as well as walking trails and a host of transportation options. Being next to the VA Hospital, we are recruiting a wide range of medical services, biotech, research firms, and healthcare providers that will bring thousands of jobs and improve the delivery of care to our community. Another great development that is coming soon is Pulte Homes Del Webb at North Ranch, a gated senior community that will offer our more mature residents new living options. It is in development now and will include 500 single-story homes. Last, but certainly not least, the villages at Tulley Springs is coming to fruition, more and more every day. Homes are being sold at a record pace, and it's no surprise why. Good talking to you. North Las Vegas is not only a growing city, it is a safe city. Our hard-working police officers keep our crime rates low and our businesses secure, and our firefighters and paramedics are always ready and will be there when called upon. They are the definition of true public service.
If nothing else, that is the most handsome city council in Nevada.
Clearly, I agree. And accomplished. It's incredible to see we do a lot here, and as you say, we move fast and faster. But when you put it all together and look at it over a course of a year, and in a normal year, it's impressive. In a year with a pandemic, I think we have a lot to be proud of in our leaders and our employees.
Great. So, I'm gonna start with Isaac. We'll just work way down to you guys.
Well, other than maybe making myself a little bit more handsome, I wouldn't change a whole lot, Mayor. I will say this, I've always been really proud that, you know, that myself and my colleagues, you know, we represent pretty much what it means to be a cross-section of the middle class. You know, you're a plumber and an electrician, and I know you used to be a linesman, owned your own business, as does Scott, have a letter carrier and another fellow educator on the board. This is definitely a citizen, a citizen board. As for things that I would improve, the only thing I think I would ask is maybe next year, include spotlight on the strength of our city, which are our residents. And maybe, you know, bring like an exemplary resident from Ward 1, from Ward 2, and so on, so forth, someone who's either maybe brought, you know, maybe a new idea, or maybe for some reason has stood out, you know, being a person who's made a difference in North Las Vegas. And if we look around, I'm sure that we can think of lots of people who fit that bill, you know, besides just, you know, the city leaders or, you know, some famous rich guy and maybe who lives in our city, the actual people who make our city function on a daily basis. That's about the only thing that I would change.
Thank you, Councilman. I love it. We're taking notes.
You know, first, I want to say, it's always a pleasure when you give a report. I mean, you know, you're so concise and so professional, you know. We're really lucky to have you on board over here with us. And I agree with Councilman Burrow. Councilman Burrow's been working very hard over here in the more mature part of town to revitalize it. And of course, you know, Councilwoman Goines Brown with the Micro Academy and Councilman Black working hard with the, being the chair of the Health Department, helping to get, you know, the supplies needed to get all of our people vaccinated. So, you know, and we are a very diverse, you know, council over here. So, you know, we kind of, we kind of show the complete picture of our community. We're an example of our community, whether it be a teacher, a letter carrier, a business owner, you know, and another teacher. And of course, the mayor, you know, he kind of takes the lead with getting the businesses in over here. So, you know, we couldn't have, couldn't have what we have without a good leader, and that's the truth. But I just want to compliment you for putting, working hard during that video, putting it together. It was a little bit of a challenge out there. I know they told me I only be out there for a little bit, and that was, I think, one of the coldest days out there. But I never get tired of watching the video, and I hope that people have an opportunity, you know, to watch it, you know, during this whole coming year. And we'll be coming up with something new and more innovative next year, I'm sure.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Mayor Lee. So, last year and this year, we're the same. When you're in the midst of the filming and you're with Clint and John, it's a little bit clunky and messy, and you wonder, how's this gonna turn out? And then you see the final product, and it's fantastic. But what I liked the most about it, it was a departure from last year because this is an entirely different year and one like, unlike any other, it was genuine. It was a genuine reflection of what we're doing, what we're accomplishing. I was having a conversation with a gentleman this weekend, and we were just talking about where North Las Vegas has come over the last eight years from our low point during the recession. And he was talking about Mayor Lee and about the work that has been done under his leadership and really the foresight to bring all this commercial development here. And just imagine where we would be had we not, we meaning you folks, because I've only been here for the good times. But prior to that, you know, that work was done deliberately to put us in a better position, not knowing that we would be facing a global pandemic. So, I just thought that was neat to hear a resident. So, it was just an honest reflection and a snapshot of what we're doing in North Las Vegas. And as a person who grew up just three-quarters of a mile from here, who would have thought? I mean, how cool it is to see where I used to ride my bike out in the desert out past Craig Road is just nothing but homes and new commercial development. So, it was pretty awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
One thing I can say about our State of the Cities, Clint and John have a way of just making you feel like you are in Hollywood, the superstar, and make it so relaxing, and they're great to work with. Even if you are horrible, they make you feel like you're the best. And so, after only a few takes, and I agree with Councilman Churchill, I was phrasing, I mean, I knew I was gonna be outside, but I was like, whoa. And they say, well, we're the same thing that you are inside. I'm like, but it's cold. And it was just as equally cold last year. I think our State of the Cities are, you can't compare them with any others because they are top-notch. They are innovative, they're different, they're exciting. We're telling a story through the five of us. We, you know, we're telling our stories. And when you sit back and say, you know, what are you gonna talk about this year? There's just so much that has occurred, it's very hard to narrow down. So, you know, you only have a set amount of time. It's so hard to narrow down, which just says that's great for us because all of the great things that we have accomplished, that we have accomplished over this past year, even during the pandemic. So, kudos to us, and thank you to you all and all the staff that worked behind the scenes to make this possible.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
And I'll just finish. What professionalism from John and Clint all the way down to your staff. Now, this is 2021 State of the City, North Las Vegas on YouTube, right? So, if people wanted to get this, and there was another video cut about, we reported to the city, is that where they would go?
Yeah. So, thank you for asking that, Mayor. We've got actually several different outlets, whatever people are comfortable with. They can go to City of North Las Vegas Facebook, they can go to City of North Las Vegas YouTube, they can visit our City of North Las Vegas website, and those are all easy ways to access the video. And we've gotten tremendous feedback. So, I hope anybody who hasn't had a chance to tune in is able to watch it.
Our economic redevelopment team is using this, you know, I mean, people wondering about coming here, they get this little video sent out to them. So, we use this throughout the year to help us. Also, I got a call from my friend Todd Moody the other day. He says, hey, I'm at Canyon Springs Video looking at what Chief Calhoun has put together and Ryan and you for COVID. And he goes, they have a video here. He says, I can't hear it's a little bit lower than I want. But he says, people are just watching this, you know, and then they have to go real quickly and stuff. He goes, you guys are really doing a good marketing yourself here. You know what I mean? That those people are coming in from other parts of the city, you know, and they're getting a great experience in North Las Vegas. And so, if it's worth telling, it's worth selling. We're selling it. North Las Vegas is the place to be. So, with the future that we have and the city we're building, it's gonna be great. So, I think the council all thinks you've done a fantastic job again. And definitely having Patrick work for you has made a huge difference in your time schedule. I just want to ask the city manager, do you have anything you want to report? You actually run the city, you know what I mean? Would you mind if I just ask you what your thoughts on it were?
On the video?
Just, you know, how we're marketing, what's going on, how, you know, stuff like that, video.
I agree with the comments that were made by you and by council members. It's been a kind of crazy year. I think that the State of the City reflects a lot of what we've done and how we've been able to lead in different areas in the valley. I think that even though we have a new year, as far as the calendar says, a pandemic doesn't know that. So, we are still looking for ways to maximize how we use the relief dollars into the community. It's one of the things that we're looking at this year because of, you know, I think one of the things I've received more compliments in mail and phone calls and things on is the work that are, that we're doing out of Canyon Springs. And what our residents see is they see the outstanding work of the fire department. What they don't see is, you know, John Runix's team and IT team and comms team and, you know, everyone else that is working on, that makes that happen. It's a true-city effort. But it wouldn't have been made possible if it wasn't really kind of originated with council. Whenever Chief Calhoun first came, approached me and said, hey, if there's an appetite, I think we can do this a better way than it's being done. I think that there's, but we would need some resources. And because of foresight of council, we were able to have CARES dollars that we could say, yeah, chief, write it up. Let me know what it's gonna cost. And if this is something we can provide and save lives in the community, then let's get on it. So, I think that it's all around. The year has been marked by team efforts and by decisions that were made that we continue to reap the rewards from. And I think it's no, it's not time now to stop. It's time to continue the momentum moving forward. We're looking at, with the current version of the next relief, the $1.9 trillion that's coming from Congress, we're looking at somewhere close to $40 million that will come directly to the city. These, once again, will be relief dollars that are designed for the community. Now, the difference between these dollars, a couple big differences is first, they're going to come directly to us, so we won't have to fight for equity. We won't have to fight for our fair share of those that like... fight for our fair share of those that like to talk about equity and like to talk about communities of color, but don't, you know, really put their money where their mouth is, literally. So we won't have to fight for it this time. The second big difference with these dollars is these dollars are specifically, they do not prohibit local governments for using them for revenue loss. And so we're going to bring forward to council, next council meeting, a plan on what to do with the remaining CARES dollars that we have, as far as how we can, we still have businesses that are in need of dollars. And those businesses are, it's important because they're the lifeblood of the city moving forward. They are our rate, they're our tax base. So we will be bringing forward a plan of what to do with the remaining CARES dollars that we have, as well as some thoughts and recommendations from staff on how we should look at using these dollars coming forward. Because what's very important to remember about the dollars that are coming, and Congresswoman Titus has been able to author some language that increases the amount of dollars that come to communities that rely heavily on tourism, so we could see an increase in the allocation that comes to us. That needs to be reflected in the fact that we are going to have a different curve as far as how we come out of the crisis. We went off a cliff with everyone else in the country, but we're going to have a little bit of a different trajectory coming out. And the language of the bill appears it's going to recognize that, and it's prudent, it'll be prudent for us to make sure that the plan that we put forward to mayor and council reflects the reality that we might need those dollars for a longer period of time as a stopgap measure to continue services we provide the city, to keep people in jobs, to make sure that we're providing those services until we know that we have pretty firm footing in how the economy's rebounded. So it was a great year. I see this year looking a lot like last year, as far as team efforts to keep doing smart things to make sure that we maximize the ROI, quite frankly, the return on investment for our ratepayers that support our efforts.
Thank you. And I also have great expectations for this year, too. I think we're already starting off great. We're already talking about March, and it's just right in the middle of February now. So, Ms. Goldberg, I think you've done a fine job. Thank you for coming today and giving us that update.
Thank you, Mayor.
Moving on to the public forum, this is time set aside for comment on posted agenda items. This public forum excludes discussions of public hearings, which will be heard later and separately. So if you want to speak on any item listed under the consent agenda, ordinance, final action, or appointments, now is that time. Madam City Clerk, do we have any blue cards or any phone callers wanting to get to us?
Mayor, we have no blue cards, but we do have one caller on the line. I'll bring the caller in.
We're ready. Thank you.
Hello, caller, state your name and address for the record.
Hello, this is Amanda Connor. For the record, I'm here for a specific agenda item, not public comment.
Okay, great. We'll catch you there then. Appreciate you. Anybody in the audience want to address the council? Saying now we're going to close the first public forum. Moving on to the agenda.
Mayor and council, item one, approve city council regular meeting agenda for February 17, 2021. It is our recommendation to approve the agenda as published.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions? If not, the chair will take a motion on the agenda.
Move for approval of the agenda as published.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on to the consent agenda.
Mayor and council, the consent agenda consists of items two through 11. It's our recommendation to approve it as published.
Thank you. Any comments or questions on the consent agenda? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Move to approve.
Items approved. Moving on to public hearings.
Mayor, council, item 12, approve AMP 14 2020 Cheyenne Valley for applicant LGI Homes Nevada LLC to request an amendment to the comprehensive master plan to change the land use designation from mixed-use employment to single-family medium on property located north of Cheyenne Avenue, approximately 500 feet west of Valley Drive. If I may, just very briefly, on these items 12, 13, and 14 are all related. In reviewing these particular items, this property is located within the Cheyenne Technology Corridor, which is really for employment areas, but it should note that a mixture of uses such as office, retail, and housing can also be supported within the Cheyenne Technology Corridor. So in this case, staff was supportive of this, is the surrounding land uses are multifamily, single-family, low employment and community commercial, and some of that has also been developed with single-family, commercial, multifamily uses. And the proposed single-family medium land use designation is consistent with the surrounding areas, and staff had no objections. I'd also like to add that during the presentation at the planning commission, the Department of, Clark County Department of Aviation, specifically in North Las Vegas Airport, did submit a letter, and I believe you have a copy of that, that expressed some concerns, and they were actually recommending that the commission denied this item. And some of those concerns was the fact that this property is located directly north of the North Las Vegas Airport, and they've indicated that the would be continuing, the subjects that would have continued aircraft noise and overflights, and that they believe the number of residential units would be exposed to a significant level of aircraft noise. And they've also indicated that a portion of this development lies within a runway protection zone, which crosses over Cheyenne into the property. They've also indicated that there's a number of conditions, should the commission approve it, that they would like to see part of the tenant map, and those things were consistent, those conditions are consistent with, which is listed in Title 17. Now, in regards to the noise levels, the area does have a 65 and 60 noise environs over this property. And according to Title 17, residential uses can be built within these areas, provided that there's sound attenuation at 25 decibels built into the homes and 30 decibels for homes that are over 30 feet in height. And the applicant has indicated that they will be providing that sound attenuation to their homes, plus we would look for it as part of the building permit application. In regards to the runway protection zone, the applicant has proposed open space within that area, so there won't be any homes or structures that would be within that runway protection zone. And that would be consistent with the previous PUD where there was no structures of any kind within that runway protection zone that was proved back in 2005. And lastly, on the tentative map, which is not on this agenda, rather than relisting all these conditions that the Department of Aviation submitted, staff did read into the record that's part of the tentative map, a condition that does require the applicant, the builder, to comply with the portion of Title 17.16.050J that does talk about the requirements that are supposed to be built into the homes and the notifications into the future residents for when those homes are sold. Otherwise, that is my presentation. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. So that information for the future buyers, Mark, would be given to them by their realtors or whoever, property managers? Is that how they would get that notice?
Most likely through the, yeah, the realtors. Probably like any subdivision, they would have a sales office and the realtor's working out of that, for that builder out of that. And they would be required to provide that information to them. I believe they would also be required to provide a map of the air terminal environs to the future buyers of those homes, so that they're fully aware of what is across the street and the sound levels there, and so they would be required to provide that.
And that would stop the shock and surprise. Okay.
Yes.
Well, thank you. So what I understand, Mr. Gornauer, sure, we're going to have one presentation, and we will ask questions on items 12 and 13 and 14 all at the same time, and then we're going to individually vote on each one of those. So welcome to the meeting.
Thank you, Your Honor, members of the council. Before I begin, I want to say it's a joy to see everybody live and in color instead of being virtual. So it's somewhat exciting for myself personally to be here, as always. That being said, I'm here representing LGI Homes. LGI Homes is looking to construct approximately over 20 acres of property for residential development. The property is owned by Lyle Brennan and Ed All and some other property owners. This property was zoned for those type of commercial uses for many years. Unfortunately, Mr. Brennan and the other owners here cannot find a suitable development. LGI Homes, as Mark Jordan has mentioned, is coming into the corridor in this area where you can have some residential in the mix here. I'm not going to go through all the applications itself. Mark did a very good job in the introduction, but I do want to stress with respect to the airport, and it's very important, because this is no different than when we represent developers nearby Clark County Airport or the Henderson Executive Airport, and personally for myself, when I represented builders nearby and adjacent to the North Las Vegas Airport. Make it known that LGI Homes will do a standalone noise disclosure form against the land, so they'll record that against the land that there is, the airport that is adjacent in this area. As the airport have asked, is you will have separate noise disclosures that will be given to the homebuyers and renters that will then be subsequently sent over to the airport. We'll work with the airport on that. In addition, the map itself, as Mr. Jordan has mentioned, will show a map of the flights in that area as part of that disclosure also, and provide that information also to the airport. You are allowed to build in these noise decibel levels. The reason is, is because your code gives a certain noise decibel construction. It gives more of a deadening sound for the home that's being built. And I believe the airport has requested, if we're under 35 feet, we would come in with 25 noise decibel level for the house itself. And so we feel that with all these noise disclosures that are required, which is no different than other properties around other airports in southern Nevada here, that this would give a potential buyer or renter enough notice of what is happening in this area itself. We did have a neighborhood, actually had two neighborhood meetings. We had one lady that appeared to the meeting. She wanted to make sure we had some single-story homes. We do have some single two-story homes that's being proposed. The two-story homes are going to be about 25 feet in height. The single stories are about 15 feet in height. I know that was a question that was asked at the planning commission itself. So with that being said, the last thing that I'll mention is the home prices are going to be probably 325 to 375 start in that area, and then depending on options and everything else that you add, will depend on the price itself. So that being said, I'd ask you to follow the staff's recommendation for approval and also the planning commission's unanimous recommendation for approval for all three applications that are before you here tonight.
Okay, thank you. We're going to open up public comment, and we'll go to the council. Madam City Clerk, do we have anybody in the line for 12, 13, and 14?
Mayor, we do have one caller on the line. I also have a written comment that I emailed to council from Jeffrey LaCorte from the Clark County Department of Aviation. He sent in the email saying that they are opposed to the residential development for 12 and 13 and recommended denial citing the noise issues as explained by Mr. Gornauer. And if approved, they recommend six conditions, and those were provided to council before this meeting. And I'll bring in the caller on number 12.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, caller, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jeff Seklaw, representing the Clark County Department of Aviation.
Welcome, sir.
Good evening, councilmembers, Your Honor. So with me in our office is, we have Jim Chrisley, Deputy Director with the Clark County Department of Aviation. We have Ben Shavetsky, the Assistant Director for General Aviation Air Force, Scott Kikline, Assistant Director for Commercial and Business Development, and our Manager of Land Use Development and Properties. And again, my name is Jeff Seklaw. As already mentioned by staff, our office is in opposition to this application. We don't support any type of new residential uses located within what we refer to as the AE60 noise contour or higher unless entitlements have already been given. As mentioned by staff and the applicant, our office has opposed many, many, many applications where such entitlements have not already been given. We just don't think it makes good planning sense to add more residential units where people are going to be impacted by significant elevated noise levels. With this project being less than 1,000 feet from the end of the runway and directly across the street from our airport security fence line, there's clearly going to be concerns from residents living in this area with aircraft traffic patterns. We just don't think it's a good idea. I would also like to remind everyone that the stakeholder group convened by SJR III of the 2009 Nevada State Legislature recommended that the City of North Las Vegas should prohibit the construction of any new building, communication tower, or other obstruction above a safe height in the immediate vicinity of the North Las Vegas Airport, and, more importantly, the future construction of residential housing or any non-compatible use within the vicinity of BGT. Members of the stakeholder group included Anita Wood, a North Las Vegas City Council member, and a resident of North Las Vegas, Janice Redondo. As already mentioned, a majority of the project located within what we would call significant high noise contours, although the sound attenuation, noise disclosure may address some issues, it doesn't address the outdoor environment or when the windows and doors are open during night temperature times within the Las Vegas Valley. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions, but we just don't think it's a good idea to add new residential developments within the decodified noise contours. And again, I can't emphasize it enough, but this project is directly across the street from the facility. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. May, you might have a couple of questions here. Is there anybody else, Madam City Clerk, that, as I'm going to?
There's no one else for item 12 or 13.
Okay. So, Bobby, I've looked at the map, and it's just that little corner that was actually in the zone that they're talking about, but did they ever offer to buy the land or anything from you, I mean, from the owner?
I have no knowledge of that. That would have to be with Mr. Brennan and the other property owners, so I apologize, I don't have that information.
All right. So I'm going to go to Councilman Black. This is in your district.
Thank you, Mayor Lee. I have a question for Mr. Jordan. Mr. Jordan, you indicated the Title 17 reference regarding the sound attenuation and the maximum heights, and I know the sound attenuation would be different for first level versus second level. Can you tell me, is that Title 17 reference? Has that been in effect for how long? Meaning, was that applicable, say, in 2000 or 2001, when the homes to the north were built? Do you know that?
Mayor, council, the reference out of Title 17 is actually adopted, was adopted in 2011, when we adopted the new zoning ordinance, and that sound attenuation of 25 decibels outside to inside applies to basically the single and two-story homes. Now, when it hits more than 30 or 35 feet in height, that's when the sound attenuation would increase to 30 decibels, and it doesn't sound like the applicant's proposing buildings that would be that tall. Plus, I should mention that the maximum building height in this particular district was 35 feet anyway, so they wouldn't be able to go above 35. In regards to the previous ordinance, I do believe there was some sound attenuation that was built into that as well, and so a lot of this was copied over. But this particular, the development to the north, Silverwood Ranch, I'm not real sure, I haven't had a chance to look it up, but that PUD, the planning unit developer was done in the 90s, so I'm not sure if we actually had any sound attenuation requirements in our zoning ordinance back at that time without doing the research.
Thank you. And I have another question regarding the conditions recommended by the Department of Aviation. It's my understanding that those are already contemplated within our ordinance. Is that correct?
That would be correct. There, as Mr. Chouatt indicated, he cited the section of Title 17 where those conditions come from. And so rather than simply relisting all those conditions, at the planning commission on the tentative map, we created a single condition that requires a developer to comply with all the requirements within the sound or the environs district, airport environs district. And we did that very purposely to draw attention to that section in our ordinance, so when they go to develop, that they would do the proper notifications, proper filings, because they do have to file with the FAA a 7460-1 that shows what they're proposing to develop in the height, so that the FAA can review all of that.
And that prompts an FAA assessment and a ratification of that, correct? That application?
Yeah.
Okay.
It does.
All right. Thank you.
Any comments, counsel, at this time? I just, did you, Richard? Okay, I'm sorry. Councilman Churchill?
I just had a question for you. You were just in my office briefing me. You were just in my office briefing me once again on this. So the flight path, and I think the mayor showed it over here in the corner.
Right here.
That's, nothing gets built over there, is that correct?
Correct.
That's going to be open space?
Yes, that's open space. That was with the previous land use approval. And with this land use approval, this would be an open space area, correct?
Okay. Now, very much like RC Farms with the disclosure as to the type of business they were doing up there when they were here. That disclosure will be, or a disclosure will be, part of this development as well. And the design and the mitigation, insulation in there and sound deadening, that'll all be part of this construction, correct?
Yes, Councilman, correct.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Is the gentleman still on the phone?
Yes, back, your honor.
I just have a question for you. What was your name again, sir? I want to call you by your name. What was your name?
Jeff Seklaw.
Justin, did you say?
Jeff.
Am I missing it?
Jeff.
Jeff. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm missing, okay. Jeff, I got a couple of questions. Over the years, I've been here seven years, and I've tried to reach out to the airport and have conversations with you guys. I never hear from you until all of a sudden you want to respond to something that I'm doing. But when I need your help, I don't get a response back. I asked you guys if we could someday, we're going to put a lot more industrial and diversify this economy and bigger companies coming in North Las Vegas. And I asked if we could maybe bring in some bigger planes. There was a request for that by some of the people who are looking to buy land in North Las Vegas and use that airport. And I was somehow notified that we're not going to let you do that. And I said, well, what is, where's the master plan? I haven't seen anything about this. Well, we don't have one. If we have, we're going to update it. But we're doing Henderson now. We'll get to you guys later. Now, this airport, is it Laguardia Airport, Ryan? That this is much land is, where was that airport in Washington area? Do you remember?
Reagan International.
Reagan International. We have more land at Reagan than Reagan International has. And we've tried to make a partner out of the airport, but you guys just refuse to pay attention to us over here. Now, we don't want to go against anything for safety or anything, but it would be very appreciative if we could have a better relationship and understanding and be able to see you as a partner instead of as an impediment to us all the time here. So it has to do somewhat with, we're building this piece of property now, and now we hear from you. And this mayor has not been very satisfied with the relationship that you've shown and leadership towards our city. So I'm not going to ask you for a response to that because you probably weren't there when it happened. But we're going to vote on this, and it has nothing to do with retribution. But it would be nice to know that we could work with you guys and we're continuing to build out and do great things in North Las Vegas for our economy and for southern Nevada that we could have a more working relationship with you guys. So that's just my point there. I never heard from you guys on this issue ever. Nobody showed up, said, hey, mayor, we'd like to get to know you and tell you what our plan is or why we're not for it. But to have you get on the phone and just always say no without ever thinking you have to kind of be a partner with us kind of troubles me. But anyway, that's just a statement. I'm not picking on you. I would like to get to know you guys a little bit better and work together with you if I could. But that's not going to affect my vote one way or the other. So at this time, does anybody have any questions of Mr. Gronauer? Councilman Gron?
Yeah, Mayor. I just have one simple question, I guess, to our friends from the authority there. And Jeff, and I'm so sorry, but I had to address also people by their last name. You'll have to forgive me. I didn't catch it. Had, now, and of course, it's speculation, it's mere speculation, but had this been a commercial development, would your opinion have changed? Or would it have been pretty much the same thing that you'd be in opposition?
I want to make sure I understand your question, councilmember. But if there would be any type of residential on this property, we would be opposing it. We believe that we've been working with planning staff for decades and decades on compatible land use planning around the North Las Vegas Airport. And that's why the existing zoning and master plan designation, we thought would be a more appropriate use for future development versus residential. And I hope that answers your question, councilmember.
Actually, it does not. You went right around it. Again, I ask very simply, if this had been a commercial development, perhaps, you know, 30 feet high or something, do you think that, and again, maybe it's only speculation, maybe you don't want to speculate, but would you have been for it or would you have been against it? I ask because on the other side, on the south end of the border, if I recall correctly, I've only been on here seven years, but if I recall correctly, early on in my tenure here as a city councilman, I do recall that the airport authority was also against a commercial development that actually got stopped on the south end.
I'm still on the phone, if I may respond, councilmember?
Excuse me?
May I respond?
Please, please.
So, no, there was a project that was a residential development south of the airport. If this was a commercial project, we would not be opposing it. And I want to make sure that everyone's aware that we don't have concerns with the height as long as the applicant goes through the FAA height review process, which staff has indicated it's a 7460-1 form. It is a residential use that we are in opposition to. So I'm not aware of any type of commercial projects around the North Las Vegas Airport that we have opposed because those are compatible uses within the noise contours.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anything else? Any questions anywhere? Councilman Black?
Thank you, Mayor Lee. Based on my study and learning about this particular site and its uniqueness, speaking to a neighbor to the north at length about what is being proposed here, looking at the size of the lots to the north and also the multifamily to the northwest, I think the lot sizes that are being proposed are comparable in nature. And what I'm hearing from the aviation opposition is, we don't like it, but if you do it, do it with these particular conditions in place. And Mr. Jordan verified that those conditions are satisfied within the Title 17. And with the disclosures for the prospective buyers, as well as the enhanced building standards that accommodate for the additional sound deadening, I think these homes can conceivably be considered more sound-friendly or airplane noise-friendly than the ones already built to the north, perhaps at least the ones in the 90s that Mr. Jordan spoke about. So having said that, I'm hopeful that the builder will build something here that would be conducive to the uniqueness of the area in terms of pedestrians and contemplating those types of things. But outside of that, I'd like to make a motion to approve this item.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions anymore? Seeing none, we have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved, 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number 13, Mark?
Mayor, council, item 13 approved, ZN 23-2020, and pass and adopt ordinance number 3056, an ordinance related to zoning, reclassifying approximately 24.30 plus or minus acres in the zoning map of North Las Vegas from a PUD Planning Unit Development District to an RCL, Single Family Compact Lot Residential District, ZN 23-2020 Cheyenne and Valley, for property located north of Cheyenne Avenue, approximately 500 feet west of Valley Drive, and providing for other matters, property related thereto.
Thank you very much. Minister of State, is there any other blue cards on this or anybody else that wanted to call on this?
Chair, we have nothing on this item.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing. For the Councilman Black.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve ZN 23-2020.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved, 5-0.
Mayor, council, item 14, approve VAC 13-2020 Cheyenne and Valley for applicant LGI Homes Nevada LLC to vacate an approximate 226-foot-long sidewalk easement and three driveway easements along Cheyenne Avenue and for a proposed residential subdivision located north of Cheyenne Avenue, approximately 500 feet west of Valley Drive.
Thank you. Opening a public hearing. Adam City Clerk, do we have any blue cards, written callers, or callers on the line?
Mayor, we do not have any people, but I was negligent in item 12 and 13, just to let you know and the public know. We sent out 479 public hearing notices. We only received six in support and four in opposition. And for this particular item, we sent out 61 notices. We've received five in support and only one in opposition and one neutral.
Thank you very much. So we will close the public hearing. Councilman Black?
I'd like to make a motion for the approval of VAC 13-2020.
Counsel, we have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved, 5-0.
Thank you.
Mayor, council, item 15, approve VAC 11-2020 Valley Vista Parcel 2.7.1 for applicant D.R. Horton, Inc., to vacate a 25-foot-wide street drainage utility easement generally located east of Avery Way, approximately 500 feet north of Farm Road.
Thank you. Mr. Gronauer, welcome again.
Thank you, your honor, members of the council. Bob Gronauer, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive. I'm here representing D.R. Horton, and we ask you to follow staff's recommendations.
Thank you. Adam City Clerk, do we have anybody on the line, written or?
We have no one on the line, and we received no public hearing notice as back for this particular item.
Okay. Then we'll close the public hearing on this. And in this particular case, go to Councilman Black again.
Thank you, Mayor Lee. I would like to make a motion to approve VAC 11-2020.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved, 5-0.
Thank you.
Mayor, council, item 16, approve ZN 21-2020, and pass and adopt ordinance number 3055, an ordinance related to zoning, reclassifying approximately 4.50 plus or minus acres in the zoning map of North Las Vegas from an RE Ranch Estates District to an R1 Single Family Low Density District, ZN 21-2020 Centennial Commerce, for property located north of Centennial Parkway, approximately 408 feet west of Commerce Street, and providing for other matters, property related thereto.
Thank you. Items 16 and 17 are related, so we'll have one presentation. Is anyone here to give a presentation on this?
Mayor, I have the applicant on the phone.
Okay.
Hello, caller. State your name and address for the record.
Hello, this is Catherine Logan. I'm with ACTUS, and our address is 3283 East Worm Springs Road in Las Vegas, Nevada.
Welcome.
We concur with, we, sorry, we concur with staff's conditions and appreciate your consideration.
Thank you very much. That was a quick presentation. So we will open up the public hearing. Adam City Clerk, do we have anyone online, comment, written comments, or blue cards?
We have no written comments or callers on the line. We sent out 274 notices. We've received two in support and two in opposition, which you received today.
This could be scary, two and two. So we will close the public hearing and we'll turn this over to Councilman Churchill for a second.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm very familiar with this property over here because I just, I live up the street from it. And I went to the meeting at the cannery, and everybody there was supportive of it. And I know I printed one of the concerns or one of the recommendations from someone who was either at the meeting or wanted some information on it. Both of the ones that I have here are in support. The only question that the resident posed was, what about that land just east of it that borders on Commerce? You know, and she had an arrow there and says, can't we develop that as well? And with a smiley face. Well, I just wanted to let her know that, you know, that would be my plan soon. At least it has been for the past 20 years. So it's just a different property owner, but we're on our way to filling in that location over here on the corner. So with that, Mayor, unless we have any other council people, anybody wants to speak, I'll be happy to make a motion to approve ZN-21-2020.
Thank you very much. We have a motion, counsel. Any other comments or questions? If not, we will go ahead and vote. I see no questions. Please cast your vote. Oh, items approved, 5-0. Thank you very much, Councilman. You are building out those roads out there in that area. I mean, a little sawtooth, Richard, you're doing a good job. Item 17.
Mayor, council, item 17, approve VAC 12-2020 Centennial Commerce for applicant, these are homes to vacate an approximate 40-foot-wide private right-of-way, a private utility easement and a drainage easement generally located approximately 610 feet west of Commerce Street and extending approximately 465 feet north of Centennial Parkway.
Thank you, Adam City Clerk. Any blue cards, written comments, or callers on the line to open up public hearing?
The applicant, I will bring her back in in case you need her.
Okay.
Hello, caller. State your name and address for the record.
Hello, this is Catherine Logan with ACTUS again. We concur with staff's recommendations and appreciate your consideration.
Thank you very much.
And we have no other written comments or...
No other written comments, thank you. We'll close the public hearing and open it and close it, I should say. Councilman Churchill?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve VAC-12-2020.
Thank you. We have a motion, counsel. Is there any comments or questions? If council is seeing none, please cast your vote. Items approved, 5-0.
Mayor, council, item 18, approve ZN 24-2020, and pass and adopt ordinance number 3057, an ordinance related to zoning, reclassifying approximately 2.04 plus or minus acres in the zoning map of North Las Vegas from an OL Open Land District to an M2 General Industrial District, ZN 24-2020 Tropical Assemblies 2.0, for property located at the southwest corner of Centennial Parkway and Beasley Drive, and providing for other matters, property related thereto.
Thank you. Once again, this is a multi-item vote, 18, 19, and 20. We'll have one presentation, I guess, by Mr. Gronauer, and then we'll vote separately. So, Mr. Gronauer.
Thank you again, your honor, members of the council. Bob Gronauer, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive. On these three matters, I'm representing Caprock. They are assembling property out here. And not only just these three items that I'll be representing, but we've tied up several more properties out here. So I'll be coming back in the next 60 to 90 days and with more industrial development for a big industrial user that they're working with. And so I'll give you more information at that point in time. Otherwise, we appreciate staff's recommendations for approval, and I'm here to answer any other questions you might have.
Thank you very much for concise presentation. We will open the public hearing. Adam City Clerk, is there anyone, written comments, callers, or blue cards available?
Mayor, we have no written comments. We did send out 55 public hearing notices, six in support, and none in opposition.
Looking good so far, Bobby. So we will close the public hearing, and at that, I'll turn it over to Councilman Gron.
Yeah, Mayor. Now, I might be a teacher, but of course, you know, I take my cue and I learn lessons from other people. And one thing, one lesson that you drove home a few years ago was the idea of turning a land. Land, of course, is just, you know, property that has no initial use other than maybe the aesthetic or the intrinsic value to it. But the idea about turning the city around is taking this land and turning it into valuable real estate. We see now, of course, you know, your vision, and that's something that, of course, I shared in, in this area, was to turn this, you know, these parcels of open land into valuable real estate. I really have to thank so many of our partners, our partners there with the Water District, our partners there at NDOT, at RTC. I mentioned this just the other day in an RTC meeting, just how important the addition of infrastructure is to this part of town. We're talking about, you know, an end user here who soon enough will be bringing valuable, you know, millions, possibly even billions of dollars worth of investment to our valley, paving the way for an entirely new reality, away from gaming, something that will protect, that make a hedge for our residency in the future. And of course, I do want to thank your developer coming in to do this. And of course, thank you of so many of our partners, including our outstanding North Las Vegas staff that has guided this transformation. And I don't have any questions other than how soon is this going to happen? And with that, if no one else has anything to say, I would like to make a motion to adopt item number 18.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments or questions on this item? Thank you. Council, any comments or questions on this item? We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved, five zero.
Mayor, council, item nineteen, approve ZN twenty-five twenty twenty and pass and adopt ordinance number thirty fifty-eight, an ordinance related to zoning, reclassifying approximately zero point zero five plus or minus acres in the zoning map of North Las Vegas from an OL, open land district, to an M-two, general industrial district, ZN twenty-five twenty twenty Tropical Assemblies two point zero for property located south of Interstate fifteen and approximately six hundred and sixty feet southwest of the intersection of Centennial Parkway and Beasley Drive and providing for other matters property related thereto.
Thank you very much. Madam City Clerk, I'm going to open the public hearing. Ask for blue cards, written comments, or any callers on the line?
The only thing I have, Mayor, to report is we sent out fifty public hearing notices. We've received six in support and zero in opposition.
Thank you very much. We'll close the public hearing, and we'll go back to Councilmember Brown.
Everything I said before, and definitely reiterating, thanking all of our city, all of our city staff that makes it happen, even our legal team, because, of course, it had a past legal muster. So, just a shout out to our under, I think, our sometimes underappreciated legal team. And that's my motion to approve.
Council, any comments or questions? Seeing none, we have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved, five zero.
Mayor, council, item twenty, approve ZN twenty-six twenty twenty and pass and adopt ordinance number thirty fifty-nine, an ordinance related to zoning, reclassifying approximately four point seven seven plus or minus acres in the zoning map of North Las Vegas from an OL, open land district, to an M-two, general industrial district, ZN twenty-six twenty twenty Tropical Assemblies two point zero for property located at the northwest corner of Azure Avenue and Beasley Drive and providing for other matters property related thereto.
Thank you very much, Director Mark. There, we're going to open the public hearing and ask the city clerk if there's any blue cards, written comments, or callers on the line at this time.
Mayor Leo, the only thing I have to report is we sent out sixty-four public hearing notices. We received six in support and zero in opposition.
Thank you very much. We will close the public hearing. Councilmember Brown.
Director Jordan, you have made my day. And with that, I'd like to make a, another motion to approve.
Council, any comments or questions? Seeing none, we have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved, five zero.
Thank you. And again, it was good to see you. I'll see you next meeting.
Moving on to ordinance's final action.
Item number twenty-one, pass and adopt ordinance number three zero six zero, amending chapter six, title two of the municipal code to expand the number of departments in the North Las Vegas Municipal Court from one to two to allow for a community diversion court in a new department, repealing ordinance number two-seven-eight-six and providing other matters property related thereto.
Thank you very much. Counsel, this has been an exciting time in our community. I don't know how this is going to end up, but when we went through the last recession, we lost a seat there shortly after, and we've been struggling ever since to get back to doing important things here. So, hopefully, we'll have a discussion on diversion courts here. But at this point in time, I'll call for a motion to pass and adopt ordinance number three oh six oh.
I'd like to make a motion to pass and adopt ordinance number thirty sixty.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we will take that motion. Please cast your vote. Five zero. Items approved.
Item number twenty-two, pass and adopt ordinance number three zero six six, repealing ordinance number two-eight-nine-zero and replacing the same with the new ordinance governing the salary and benefits for municipal court judges and the compensation of alternative municipal court judges and providing other matters property related thereto.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any comments or questions? If not, the show will take a motion.
Move to approve item twenty-two.
We have a motion. Seeing no comments or questions, please cast your vote. Items approved, five zero. Moving on to appointments.
Item number twenty-three, appointment of Chris Lee as municipal court judge for Department Number One of the North Las Vegas Municipal Court for the term to expire when the judge is elected in the twenty-twenty-six primary or general municipal elections.
Thank you. When this kind of got out in the press that we were moving forth on this, I had a couple inquiries. A couple resumes were sent to me, and we looked at all the applicants, and we were trying to build a diversionary court, something that veterans or people with drug addictions or alcohol would have another opportunity to have maybe their situations looked at a little bit differently. But with the load that the court had, it was obvious that we weren't going to be able to burden the court of one person with that much responsibility. So, the criteria was somebody who had had some experience in the diversionary court. We asked Councilman Churchill if he would spearpoint, spearhead this, make some decisions about what other cities were doing, or bring it back to us. He's very concerned about what the veterans' court could look like. So, he's been kind of the front end of this, and I would like to turn the time over to Councilman Churchill.
Thank you, Mayor. I just noticed that Judge Lee came into the chambers. I have had the opportunity to make some phone calls to different police chiefs in different parts of Nevada, Washoe, Douglas County, Reno, to kind of, lack of a better word, kind of pick their brain to see how they've been running their, their community courts in their locations. They vary somewhat, but very basically, you know, the work that they do is all, all good work. You know, it wasn't too long that, that we kind of changed the direction when we got the new council over here for our city. Just the way our city manager earlier mentioned that when we get the CARES dollars, we take those CARES dollars and we put it back into the community where it belongs. And we felt the same way when it comes to rehabilitation, when we decided to open up our detention center to go ahead and, you know, rename that a community correction center. Now, we're working on something to complement that, and that would be the Community Diversionary Court. If you don't know, we're, and Mayor says this, we've got two speeds faster here. But with staff's help, you'll notice eventually that the animal control trucks that, that drive around the city are going to be renamed Animal Protection Services. You know, this is a vision of ours over here on council, you know, to provide services. We understand that, that our job is to give whatever we have back to the community because we're elected by the community. And I could tell you that I've had the, the privilege of knowing Judge Lee for a number of years. I consider him a friend. And when we were looking at, you know, different possibility of judges to fill this position over there, you know, he was, he was the first one that popped into my mind because of the work that he was doing with the Veterans Court, you know, in the past, and his passion, you know, when it comes to veterans, and his closeness, you know, to the community and to the city. He's, he's always been out there, and, you know, he was my choice right at the beginning. So, I just want to say that, and our council members, my fellow council members, of course, have a voice in this. But I feel that, that Judge Chris Lee will be, will be an asset to this diversionary court, take it to another level, and work in partnership with us over here on the, on the executive side because it is a partnership. It's, it's business, but the fact of the matter is we're all working for one goal, and that's to rehabilitate these people and not make it a revolving door where they come in, and then they, they go out, and then they wind up coming back in again. So, it's going to be a bit of a challenge, but there's only one judge that I know that is up to that task, and that is Judge Lee. So, with that, I'll be more than happy to make a motion to appoint Judge Chris Lee to Department One of the North Las Vegas Municipal Court.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments or questions at this time? Seeing none?
Mayor, I'd like to just briefly, one of the things that we talked about in, in bringing this forward was that we would bring some presentation of what the court was going to look like. We did that in the very beginning. We discussed what diversionary court was. Cindy Marshall and Aaron Telles from the court worked hard on gathering information to discuss what the court could be. In briefings with you all, we, this week, we discussed the fact that in lieu of bringing forward a further vision of what a diversionary court is, is it made the most sense that after an appointment, that the judge would then return back to council and return and report. We'd like to recommend that, if the appointment is for, for Judge Lee, that he comes back in thirty days to report what he's working on, who he's meeting with stakeholders, getting any further advice from council on, to make sure that, that your policy direction's being followed out, and then possibly come back again in sixty days. One of the values of, of creating this the way that's being created is we're giving plenty of runway for the, for the judge to be able to figure out what's, what works best for our community, to take information from the stakeholders that you're meeting with council, councilman, to take information from other stakeholders, and really put together a vision, which I thought would, might look a little bit different than what we put together. So, that's the reason we didn't do a formal presentation on this item, even though we discussed it in previous council meetings, is we want to make sure that we're not pigeonholing anybody or putting anybody in any kind of parameters. We want them to have free rein, a blank canvas, come back and return and report.
Thank you. If he does survive this vote, I had a couple things I was going to bring him up, and we could talk real quick. And thank you for piping in there. Counsel, any comments, questions this time? Seeing none, we have a motion for Councilman Churchill. Please cast your vote. Items approved, five zero. Congratulations, Judge. Would you please come up, Chris, real quick here? We have Chris sitting in the audience. I didn't see him come in until-
He's also here with his wife.
Huh? His wife? She doesn't look like she's aging. You look, she looks younger than I saw her last time.
Come on down.
Chris?
Yeah, don't be shy.
Bring your wife down. We'd like to, see, I know your children must be, I saw you seven years ago when they were eight and nine years old, I think.
Yeah, they got, they have lovely children.
Six and seven, yeah. Yeah. Well, let me throw this at Chris first, and then we'd like to have you guys say something. Chris, I know you've had a lot of experience, you know, and that was one of the things that made you a real good candidate for this. And following up on what the city manager is asking for, we know that you have a fine staff over there to work with, that you're already getting started on a good foot, you know, good leadership, good people. But we want to make sure within thirty days, and I'll give this to you, that the infrastructure's going into place, okay, that the community partners and stakeholders have been spoken to. So, as you talk to the vets, we know who you're going to talk to there, and you can channel people to the right locations with the help of your staff. But we'd like you to come back and tell us who those partners were and what's going on with that. There's forms and letterhead, things like that that take place, or I think you can steal that from where you came from, you know? We want to get all that going. Staffing, you know, let us know that, you know, you're okay with staffing and stuff. You have a judge over there who's been staffing pretty well, I think. I think you'll be doing pretty well. And then if there's any technology issues, you know, those are the things, this is a new court for us. That's thirty days, and in sixty days, we want to know pretty much your implementation stage, you know? I mean, when and how are you going to get this going, how the training of the staff is going, because this is something new, but grants applied for. And then, when the first court proceedings will take place, when will you be ready to start serving our community with this diversionary court? So, would you take that assignment?
Absolutely, Mayor. I'm happy to do it. I'm super excited. I've got a lot of head up energy to do all that anyways. And hopefully, you know, I can be a part of this great process here. I've worked fast and faster a lot. Hopefully, I can be a part of it.
Thank you. Would you like to introduce your wife real quick before I ask the council to speak to you?
Like I said on my way up here, most people just want to talk to her anyway. Yes, my wife, gee. You know, I don't get an opportunity to publicly thank her and not for just the incredible support that she's given me. You know, I wouldn't be able to do any of this. I can say this really, because my parents aren't here, they've been out of shape when I didn't thank them first. But really, it's her who's been really steering our family this entire way and gives me the opportunity to do anything supposed to something like this. So, she's, she's just the best.
Would you like to let us know her name?
Oh, yeah, it's, oh, my wife, I did not watch the play.
Yeah, I did. Yes, her, her name is Gee. She goes by Gee. Her name is Gee He. But yeah, she's just, she's been amazing. My son, unfortunately, my son, his, his name is Chris too, so I hope I don't screw things up and make his life miserable. And we have a ten-year-old daughter named Stella who's, who's just amazing.
Thank you. Gee, for the next sixty days, we're expecting him to be working real hard to get ready for the court. Can you support him in that role?
Yes, I will.
I think behind every great man.
Mayor, she can't wait to get me out of the house. I tell you, she's ready.
I'm ready.
Are you ready?
Thank you so much. He's, I'm so excited. He's ready to work really hard.
Thank you. We know you're a sweet couple. We'll have a chance to be with you. I'm going to ask the council to say something. If Councilmember Brown would like to start, we'll just go down the line.
Yeah, Mayor, I'm really excited that we have an experienced judge of, of Judge Lee's caliber to hand this, to hand this over. As someone who teaches psychology, and I reiterate just how important it is to have a new diversionary court that will be dealing with mental health issues. As a father to, to a child, an adult child with mental health and substance abuse issues, I've seen what a diversionary court could mean in, in her life there. And of course, you're, you're well aware of my daughter and her challenges that she faces in Douglas County, and how much, you know, a, a well-put-together diversionary court in Douglas County helped her, and is helping out other people and her, just living here in the downtown area of North Las Vegas and seeing again and again, you know, our, the, how much these issues impact our, our residents' lives. I think we have entrusted the right person with this task. And of course, you will have our full faith and anything that we can do for support. I know speaking, I shouldn't speak on everybody else's behalf, but I think everyone would agree with that, that you'll have every opportunity and every bit of support that you possibly can for myself and for my colleagues. Welcome on board.
Thank you. So, I was, as I was listening to you talk, I was reflecting back when I sat in your court chambers and watched with my own eyes the, the results of this restorative and rehabilitative work in someone's life. And, you know, it's a deliberate effort that takes a lot of people. It's not just the judge and, and, you know, person, client or person relationship. It takes a family. It takes a support system. And I watched as there was this air of celebration and of triumph as the folks that you worked with, they were dressed sharp, and they were thrilled and ready to, you know, take on the next step in their, in their life, and it was as a result of the work that you did. So, I foresee that being alive and well in our community. When this was presented to us in terms of hiring a judge or appointing a judge, I should say, I thought, you know, we need someone who knows our community, who knows this type of, of program. And I thought they need to be able to do so with a really, really short learning curve. We don't have a lot of time. We want to get it going and get it going quickly. So, plug and play, turnkey, Chris Lee.
Wow, that's good. I don't know if I can top that. So, I'll say congratulations. I think when we, we met, we had a pretty candid conversation in just things, just about our expectations and the vision that we have. And most importantly, that those who make bad choices, that they have a chance, a second chance to, to do this thing called life the right way. So, and I think they need a lot of assistance with that, and so we are tasking you with that, and can't wait to see that happen.
Chair's prerogative. Michaela, would you pipe in here a little bit? I know you've been one of your goals since you've been here.
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, Mayor. I, I'm really excited about this. I mean, I think I've told all of you how important this kind of a program is for our community, and again, to echo what we were talking about earlier, in the middle of a pandemic, we've been able to accomplish so much and continually do what's right for the community, which is to give back and to be of service and try and figure out how to make people's lives better. And this is one of the ways, we're creating a new court and putting in a judge who is plug and play. And so my team, who a lot of them are here, in fact, some of our legal assistants were here, too, but my attorneys, Felicia, our victim advocate, we are in full support of this diversionary court because we see all the cases that are presented to our office, and we have to make the decision on what to do with them. And some of them, we, you know, we do see regularly, and maybe there is an opportunity for them to have a chance at a different life and a different outcome with this diversionary court. And so I'm really excited about how much effort you all have put into this. This isn't just going to be a program one day a week. This is basically a full-time court where we can try to do things that are different than what other courts have done. I mean, I'm sure we're going to be borrowing some ideas, but I think also with the enthusiasm and the flexibility that Judge Lee possesses, we can, as a group between all the different departments, experiment with what works, what maybe doesn't work, to see what will create results, because there's not a one-size-fits-all solution to some of the problems that we see people are, you know, experiencing. So I really think this is the compassionate, the right thing to do, and I applaud you. And I'm, again, another thing I'm super proud of to be a part of for the city.
Thank you. And so I'd like to thank the court staff, especially Cindy Marshall, who's worked so diligently to prepare for this court and her staff, and, and for the way she has worked with the city manager and the council to see that this happened. So Cindy, I just wanted, we're thanking you one hundred percent for coming forth with this idea. The time was right, and for the, for working with city manager, the city staff, the judge, I mean, you had to put it all together, you know, so I think it's great. Now, so we're going to end the meeting in about two minutes. If you'd stick around, maybe you could meet some of your new friends, you know, and.
All right.
But just have a seat right there, Chris.
Thank you.
Okay, but congratulations on your new career. We expect you to be here in a lot of years. We've been on the city manager's report.
Mayor, Counsel, I didn't plan on really saying anything, but I just, as I was listening to this, as I was thinking about CARES and the different, some of the meetings we've had today, you know, one of the things I pride myself on in, in being here at the city is how, and I've, I've said this a lot, staff hears me say it all the time, is how we're a laboratory of democracy. I, I think that there are things that we do in this building day in and day out. There's a lot of things that we've done during this pandemic that is a model for, I, I think, not just locally, but nationally. We've seen that, we've, we've been regular in consulting with communities across the country and even across the world when it came to how we were able to do things through an economic development standpoint and turn the finances around. I think we're definitely a model there, and, and it's been recognized in, you know, Southeast Asia, it's been recognized in South America. Just thinking of the different people we've talked to about that, I think that the work that Councilwoman Goins Brown has done with SNUMA and, and, you know, putting together a school on the fly during a pandemic and having real good results from it, I, I think the investment that was made, and it just quietly happened, but we quietly opened a corrections facility, the community corrections facility is viewed as being something different. And I think that if we see some of the hires that are being made and some of the appointments that are being made, it's reflecting council's desire to join with management and being a laboratory of trying out things, trying to do things a different way. And I think that the mayor likes to say just hide and watch. I, I think that we do a lot of things and a lot of people hide and watch, but I also think it's time that we probably, I, I mean, I could, I think when I am not city manager anymore and I go back to the academy or back to a think tank, and I, I have things I can work on for days as far as best practices and things that we've been able to do, and it's just, it's something, as I sit here, that I'm just, I'm thankful for the team that's, that does this day in and day out. I'm thankful for the support of, of, of you all in helping us to try and create better systems and better processes and better government for our residents, and it's truly amazing, and we just see it all the time. So just, I just wanted to just make that observation.
Thank you very much. I'll add to that. I meet with the mayor's quarterly, we have lunch, and I tell them what we're doing and what we're going to do, and they look at me and their jaws drop, and they go, oh, that's so smart. That is great. I go, so what do you guys get? Oh, you go first, you know? So we go first, and we pave the way, and we don't make many mistakes along the way. When they copy it, they're a better community because they followed some of the good intelligence that this city has to offer to its community. So with that, we're going to move on to public forum. Now is the time to speak, the public to speak on issues, not on the agenda. You're limited to three minutes if you want to speak. Remember, the council can hear these items, but we cannot take any action tonight on them during the public forum. We want to know right now, Catherine, do we have any, any blue cards, mailers, comments, or anything?
We have no blue cards, but we do have a caller that's calling on the first public forum, but I'm going to bring that caller in.
Okay, great.
Hello, caller. State your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Kenny Fox. I will not be giving my address.
Welcome, sir.
Hi, you guys ready?
Yes, sir.
Wonderful. My original comment was submitted on January nineteenth. Our comment was not read aloud. On February third, I submitted the comment again. It was instead given a twenty-one second summary. I am now reclaiming the three minutes from January twentieth meeting as well as two minutes and thirty-nine seconds from the February third meeting. My comment will not be nine minutes, don't worry. My comment has slightly adjusted to fit the new date of comment there with me. I will now begin the comment intended for January twentieth meeting. Six weeks ago, citizens of the community submitted a letter requesting that the constant raise on the unhoused encampments be added to future meetings' agendas. We are happy to hear that letter read aloud with excellent respect and clarity from Catherine A. Rayner. However, that joy was short-lived after six weeks of meetings. We have not made it onto an agenda despite significant attempts. What then, might I ask, must we do to be heard? In the city of North Las Vegas, pets, dogs, and horses have more empathy and protection than actual humanity. The hypocrisy of your empathy towards pets not extending to the animals on your plate is a story for another day. I have tried my absolute hardest to understand your disconnect between empathy for pets and empathy for humans. Why does the former receive such needed attention when the latter is seen as an inconvenience? I would like to take this moment to remind you that although unhoused, these people are still citizens living in the Las Vegas Valley, and that means you serve them. Their protection is one of the responsibilities you undertake when accepting your position of finger-cloaked leadership. The Las Vegas Valley is waging an active and unconstitutional war on the poor. As Martin Luther King said, "One has not only a legal, but a moral responsibility to obey just laws. Conversely, one has a moral responsibility to disobey unjust laws." Your citizens who you serve willingly demanded action and were not given the time of day for a response. You have my email, you have my community demand, people freeze on the streets every single night. What are you waiting for? When you wake up with us marching in your neighborhood, don't say we didn't come to you at work first. I will now begin the comment intended for the February third meeting.
I'm just going to get some information.
I have made persistent attempts to speak with the city council, and for some reason, the only person replying is Alfredo. Before we sing his praises, I'll be the first to point out his incompetence. He came to me to discuss the inhumane and unconstitutional ten rates and somehow remarkably managed to answer zero questions and gave zero answers. Has talking on record become too difficult in the land of empty promises? Here is an excerpt from one of our conversations, though I would not give him the credit of saying we spoke, as all he did was just let them stall. Why would he be in a hurry to get work done when he gets paid a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year to supply sums? Back to the excerpt. Just prior to the reading of my letter on January sixth, six weeks ago, Senator Deanna Neal made a wonderful speech directly to those in this council. She stated this. How will you serve others and fight against injustices with the time you have left? If we had to write your eulogy today, what would it say about your work, my work, your service, our service, and how you treated people? And did you stand on the right side of truth? And when it came time to challenge powerful power, powerful people, were you able to stand with the people on the right side of the issues? I heard her words, did you? She then quoted her father, the late John Neal. Enter yourself in the Constitution. If you lose your way, look to the Constitution and the people. I am here to remind you that the camping ban and raids on the unhoused are both unconstitutional and against the CDC guidelines for COVID, and your contribution to these crimes shows you do not live by the standard by which you pretend to. As I have spent my time prepping for these comments, I will reclaim my three minutes from this meeting at a later meeting. Be better human, ACAB, and good night.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments again tonight. Madam City Clerk, do we have anybody with blue cards, callers, or written comments?
Merely, we have no one else.
And with that, we will close the public forum. This meeting is adjourned, and say hi to our new judge if you want. Thank you.